Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM on October 26th and I'll call the Town Council meeting to order. If we could, please take a moment of silence to reflect on all those that are currently serving and have served in the past, enabling us our freedom, safety, and privilege to vote. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, if you could please identify yourself.
I don't see anybody. Mike?
Thank you again. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Before we get started, Don, I'd like to thank you, and I'm sure everybody else feels the same way for filling the vacancy. And I'm sure everyone's aware, but it doesn't hurt to let anyone know that has an interest in running in the spring that Don has stepped in to fill the void and help us through June 31st, I believe. And at that time, it'll create a level playing field for anyone that wants to come out and serve on the council. So again, thanks, Don. And I'd also like to thank Pat Henry for his contribution over the past two and a half years. Some of his accomplishments, serving on our licensing committee and bylaw committee certainly was a huge asset. And we all appreciate his contributions and wishing the best moving forward from myself, the entire council, and Mary as well. Under communications and correspondence this evening, I have a letter that our clerk of the council, Jeannie, submitted, and I'll read it for the record. It's dated October 20th, 2021 to the East Long Meadow Town Council. The purpose of this letter is to let you know how the resignation of Town Manager Mary McNally is affecting us, the town department heads. Since Mary assumed the role of Town Manager, the climate in the town hall has become of positivity, collaboration, and optimism. Prior to that time, employee morale was low, and there was somewhat of a bilateral environment in the town hall. Mary has proved to be visible and admirable manager, not only to the department heads, but to all town employees. She is approachable, candid, and supportive to department heads, treating us with respect and fairness. Above all, she is supportive to departments' needs, objectives, without preference or bias to any department above another. While we will deeply miss Mary as our manager, we respect her decision to resign and understand the strain that she has been under, which has been an interference for her to do the job that she had been awarded to her when she was appointed Town Manager by the Town Council. As Mary submitted her resignation letter with sadness and regret, we are submitting this letter to you also in sadness and regret, and can only hope that she will be replaced with someone as equal in the degree of talent and character as Mary. This letter is signed by numerous department heads, and I'm sure you all have a copy of it. And I appreciate the time for the department heads to not only put the letter together, but take the time to sign it and show Mary well-deserved recognition. At this time, do we have any council comments, Jeannie? No, or nobody from the council signed up, and I'll ask each one of you. No comments at this time? If we have none, public comments? We do have public comments. Jeannie, you can just confirm that. I talked to you earlier today.
Yes, Pat Henry had requested public comments, so he should be here.
I don't, even though, if he is here, under a different name, if he could raise his hand, but I don't see him on the list.
Okay. Well, we'll give it a minute here, Don, in case he's having complications. If we don't see his hand, we won't be able to bring him in. I guess there's nothing at this point, Don?
I don't see any hands. I don't see Mr. Henry's name on the list. I'm just going to check my email, see if perhaps he tried to send me a message. No, I have no, I have no email saying that he's having difficulty, so.
Okay, thanks, Don. We'll keep marching here. Mary, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, counselor. I do. It's a bit shorter tonight, since the interval between the last meeting was only two weeks. But before I get into that, I just want to say thank you to you for reading that letter, and thank you to all of the department heads who signed on. Not so much for me, although I do certainly appreciate their support, and it's very gratifying and humbling. But I think it speaks more to their collegiality with one another and their willingness to pull together and move forward on the town's business, which I'm quite certain that they will do to the best of their abilities with whomever is occupying the Town Manager seat in the, in the future. So thank you to each of them. And those of you I didn't catch up with today personally, I will see to it that I see you in the next day or two. The Town Manager Report starts off with my suggestion that you consider the nomination of Rebecca Torscha for the remaining seat on the Board of Health. I interviewed Mrs. Torscha last week, as I say in my report, and I had forwarded her application to you. She's a nurse by professional training, and she currently teaches at Putnam High School and has for the last 15 years in the medical technology and information trade occupations, as she explained it to me. She does have a great willingness to serve on the board. She's been a resident of town for some time, and she expressed a desire to help the community wend its way through, hopefully, the tail end of our COVID submersion. We continue to work with the Hampton County, Eastern Hampton County veterans. We have yet to receive our certification from the Commonwealth, although there was a meeting with the secretary, the veteran secretary, a week or so ago, which sort of crystallized what they're waiting for from the district in terms of information. So the board met last Thursday night, and we've drafted another letter to the secretary's office, which hopefully upon receipt will allow them to certify our veteran service officer and allow her the access to the software and the training that she needs in order to fully complement her services as the, as the service officer for the district. Negotiations are ongoing with the police union, although we haven't met since the last meeting, but I've met several times with Chief Williams and with Steve Lonergan to try to craft some proposals. And I did forward a proposal to the union president and their representative yesterday, and we have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, so hopefully we'll make some progress at that meeting. Our master plan implementation open house occurred last Thursday. Bethany and Karen worked very hard to put this program together, which they, they touted as a community involvement fair of sorts, and we did it for two hours, a session at 1:00 PM and then one again at 5:00. The turnout was a bit of a disappointment, however, trying to look at the bright side and be positive about it, both Bethany and I agree that the fact that we obtained some new interest is very encouraging. The master plan, as you know, was a great achievement for the town this year. And so we really want to focus on what it, what it suggested as the town's, be the town's guiding path for the future. So that was the whole point of the open house. There were representatives there from several other third parties, the Norcross House, the Lions Club. Recreation had a big display about Heritage Park. So, I mean, it was, it was nice. It was comfortable. It was very casual. There was, there was initially an intention to have a formal agenda, but with the traffic being as kind of casual as it was, we, pardon me. Pardon me. Anyway, that happened Thursday, and we're very pleased with the results. I did, I did attach some information about electric vehicle charging stations just to introduce the concept to the council. It will come before you again at a later date for your consideration, because there will be a little bit of a cost outlay if the, if we decide to go forward with this in the future. But it seems as though, first of all, it was mentioned in the master plan as part of our energy consciousness. And as you know, I'm sure there is a distinct recommendation that vehicles become less gas-dependent oriented over the next decade or two. So we just want to introduce the concept to the town. I think there's a lot of electric vehicles on our roads already, and this will provide an opportunity for additional charging stations. So that's what that information is about. I did receive a couple of questions today from Connor. Thank you very much, Counselor O'Shea. I did forward back some answers about what revenue might be generated upon the installation of these charging stations, but it's really at its infancy stages, and, and the future of the topic will have to be developed and discussed and shared with you as meetings go on. Lastly, second to the last, I say that every, every time I report. I am extremely proud of Bethany Yao. She was nominated, or as of last Monday, by Ken Comia, who's one of the senior planners at the Pioneer Valley Planning Association, for the Emerging Rising Planner of the Year. Ken Comia was extremely impressed with Bethany's efforts through the master plan process. And as a result of that, and working with her on numerous other initiatives over the last 12 to 18 months, he took it upon himself to suggest that she would be an appropriate recipient for that award. I wholeheartedly concurred and authored a letter of support praising her creativity and her initiative and her ability really to deal with not only her colleagues, but third-party professionals in the planning community. So I give her a world of credit. I hope she gets this award. And I just wanted to share that good news with you about one of your very effective, talented department heads. Hopefully, she'll stay with East Long Meadow for many years to come. And lastly, we did receive notification from Mass Development that your recently authorized PACE program has been requested, capital funding, private capital funding has been requested by a town business for solar project through that PACE program. They did not identify the business, and Steve's finance office had to fill out a form so that we can set up the town mechanism for that Betterment assessment, assuming that financing is in order. But I'm happy that someone, some entity is capitalizing on the opportunity that that financing presents. So that's all I have in my report tonight. Thank you. And I'm sorry about the phone. I thought I had shut it off.
That's all right. Thank you, Mary. I'd like to entertain a motion to move back to line item six under public comments. The connection for Pat Henry has been resolved, and I believe he's in the audience right now. So if we could have a motion to go back to six, only to return to orders of the day, that would be appreciated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Been hearing and seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. Don, can you bring him in?
I think he's here.
All right. Pat, can you hear? Can you hear me, Pat? Pat? Can any, nobody can hear Pat, right? It's not just my PC? Okay. Well, try it again. It looks, if you can see us, you are currently muted. It looks like you're unmuted right now. All right. Unfortunately, it looks like we are experiencing technical difficulties.
So I, I will, I'm going to send it back, but he'll still be attending, so he can try again.
Okay.
I mean, that's your call.
All right, we'll, we'll move along. Fortunately, we are meeting again in two weeks, so hopefully any issues could be repaired if, if we're not successful at this point. But that being said, we'll move to orders of the day. And under licensing matters, I'll entertain a motion for a change of manager at AMG.
I make a motion to approve a change of manager at, for AMG Retail, One LLC DBA Atlantis Fresh Market, 227 Shaker Road, to Christine Diagel.
Second.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Marilyn. Jeannie?
Yes, Mike, I see that Samantha Rodriguez, the AMG Retail representative and the new manager, are in the audience. If you have any questions for them.
Okay, I'm going to start right now. We do have a motion on the floor here. Is there any discussion or questions that the council members might have before we bring, bring the manager in?
Mike?
Yes, Ralph?
So through Jeannie, if you don't mind, everything looked like it was in order to me.
Yes.
And this is just simply a change of manager, right?
Yeah.
Yes, well, we had a change of manager for AMG Retail previously, but it was turned down by the ABCC, and that, that's all in this packet that you'll see. So Samantha's coming back with a new change of manager for Christine.
So even if we approve it, it still goes through ABCC for them to approve it?
Yes, it's considered a reconsideration at this point.
Okay. Don, I saw your hand up. Did you have a question or?
I saw some advertising, and I'm hoping I'm not confusing the businesses, but I was going to ask if, if this had anything to do, but I just got the answer that it's just a reconsideration with the new marketing of offering home delivery of certain goods and products that this place has. I was just wondering, but I think I got my answer.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? I'm, I'm hearing and seeing none, so this is a roll call vote. I'll start with, I'll start with myself. I'm not muted, obviously. Here, I'm a yes. Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. We moved to financial matters, and there are none this evening. And there is no old business at this time, but under new business, the represyncing, and I believe Jeannie, you're, you make the presentation on that. I met with Jeannie today, and I went over the maps and everything else and understand the concept behind it, but I'll let Jeannie run with it, so.
So every, every 10 years, the federal US Census has a census, and they base those numbers on the federal census. I'm sorry, I'm tripping over myself. So it's not like the local census that comes out once a year. This is done every 10 years. And the numbers came out late because of COVID. It just came out in September. And the, and you'll see that they're asking for an October, October 30th deadline to get a vote in. And that's only because they gave us that deadline a couple of months ago, and they rolled out the precinct maps piece by piece. They all didn't come at once. So we're probably one of the last towns to get them. So I tried to act on this quickly. I sat with the representative from the Secretary of State's office, and he explained the lines to me. And basically, what had been explained to me before is they don't like to see precincts over 4,000. As you know, East Long Meadow is around 16,000. It goes up, it goes down a little bit. But there are a couple precincts right now out of our four that are over 4,000, and a couple that are teetering. So we were told it's about time. The federal census showed us at 16,400. So they do the lines. I reviewed them with them. I know Mike's seen them. Ralph was in the office. He saw them today. It doesn't mean anything more for the residents, except they may have a different precinct number. We're going to have to purchase an additional voting machine for the fifth precinct that I'll ask for probably in January out of free cash. But other than that, it shouldn't change our polling location, shouldn't change anything for the voter. Just precinct one changed a little bit, very little. I asked if we could keep that precinct the same, but they actually moved the lines around on the screen with me, and it showed how the percentages changed. And if we kept it the same, it wouldn't be within the requirements that the state is asking. So I was asking for a vote from you tonight to approve the map as presented. If you'd like to table it till the 9th of November, if you're meeting, and you'd like to come into the office and view the maps for yourself, you can do that. But I'm confident that it was done correctly after a couple of reviews from myself and asking for the vote tonight.
Thanks, Jeannie. So thank you for the presentation, and I'll entertain a motion, and then we can continue with discussion.
I move to accept, as presented by the town clerk, the 2020 represyncing plan for the town of East Long Meadow.
And I second the motion.
Okay, a motion in a second. Discussion starting with Connor.
Thanks, Mike. Just one question. I know in your letter that you sent to us, there was a question about like the flip-flop of precinct four and five. So does that draft map that actually has the number five and four on it, with like five being green and four being red, are those the correct numbers in the correct place, or were they intended to be flipped on that draft?
So the precinct that borders Connecticut is now, is five.
Okay, and the green one that borders Houston would be four?
Four. And I wanted just to keep, I wanted to change that precinct to four, because that's pretty much what it is now. I was trying to make the least amount of changes to residents as, as we can. And I was hoping for a vote tonight, because the earliest we get it to the state, they can start adjusting our state computer system, the voter registration system. Because around the 1st of December, I'll be ordering the census reports. And it would be ideal to have the people's new precincts on the census report with an insert explaining the change and why.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Welcome.
Tom?
Jeannie, it, you're going to have your hands full. By adding another precinct, does that mean you're going to have to add six, eight new staff? And I know that's a challenge, trying to keep current with the, with the four precincts.
Well, I've already asked someone to be a warden for precinct five, and they've accepted. And I, we only have people checking in now, so there's no more checkout people. And we actually have a lot of new election workers, and I had, I wouldn't say I hadn't overstaffed. I don't want to say I paid too many people, but we had to have a lot of traffic control because of COVID, the last election. So we have plenty of people on board, and I already have people picked out that I can ask to check in for that precinct.
Good, thank you.
Okay, the only other piece I'd add that, while going over these numbers with Jeannie, and, and obviously, not everyone has this chart in front of them, but balancing things out in precinct one, I'll run one through five. On one, we're going to have approximately 30, 30, 300 residents, 33 and two, 33 and three, 32 and four, and 33 and five. So it certainly creates a lot more balance than being lopsided, if you will, the way it was, and the state's recommending it. Any further discussion? Jeannie?
I just want to mention that the only time this will be revisited will be in 10 more years, when they do the 20, the 2030 census. So until then, this is the way it's going to stay.
All right. Well, Connor can run with it 10 years from now. That being said, it's, this is a roll call vote, obviously, and, and I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Under new business, I'll entertain a motion to approve to waive the remainder of time granted to the Town Council under Article Section 5.4. I'll let somebody finish reading that motion, if they would, please.
I move to waive the remainder of the time granted to the Town Council under Article Five, Section 5-4 of the Charter regarding the appointment of the Board of Health member Rebecca Torscha.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I spent a little time this week with Mary and figuring out how to appropriately put this on the agenda. And I can, the best way to describe this is, this is a situation similar to what, what we did when we hired our chief of police. There's no benefit to drag this out. If we finalize this this evening, then that board will have three, and they'll be able to start as soon as, I'll say tomorrow, rather than waiting two weeks. And not having a board for a while, we're falling behind in, obviously, agenda items that they'd like to take care of on, with their own agenda. So I would encourage waiving this 45 days. Any, any other discuss, discussion or questions? Then we'll roll call vote again. I'll start with myself. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So continuing on under new business, we talked about discussion of a procedure, or discussion of an establishment of Town Council Code of Conduct. You know, we, we worked on this months ago, and I can say Kathy was very instrumental in working with Jesse. And I believe that conversations need to be continued amongst all of us. But I would suggest that we continue this discussion, hopefully, on November 9th. And I wanted to add in that I'm wishing Kathy my best, and I'm sure you all are as well, because she does have urgent family members, matters to attend with this week. And I can only hope that they'll be resolved on November 9th, and she'll be able to join us. And like I said, she was very instrumental in working with Jesse on this code of conduct. So it's not being forgotten. I would just like to continue that discussion on the 9th. Does anyone have any questions? All right. The next discussion is a procedure to appoint an acting town manager. Because I was part of that, and Kathy was, well, I don't remember exactly how much engagement anyone else had in this. But my suggestion now would be for those interested to submit a resume and a, a letter of interest to either our HR department and our town clerk. They both work side by side, so both of them having those documents. I think once we have those documents, we can look at the length of list and see how many people are actually interested in that position. And my suggestion would be kind of like we did in the past for Board of Health or other positions for them to come before the entire council, so that we all have an equal opportunity to ask the questions that we want. Because in the, in the end, the end result will be, we will be voting for somebody to sit in that capacity. So that being said, we can continue the discussion with anyone else that has questions or concerns. Connor?
Thanks, Mike. I think it would be appropriate, too, if we posted notice about that, too, whether it be in the reminder and on the town website for seeking additional applications.
That will be complied with. That was discussed. I, I didn't mention it, but we'll kind of follow the same protocol that we generally do, where the publications take place. So it's well advertised, so that we have the, you know, everyone you know, everyone knows about the position and it gives us a, a choice on who we feel will represent the town best going forward. So any other comments? Okay. If we, on the same subject matter, down the road a bit, and I can say, I can say down the road a bit, because if we have an acting town manager, I believe that that individual can sit in that capacity for six months. And if need be, there could be, let me just make sure my notes are right here, acting six months, twice. I believe that if we needed an extension after that six months, so that would buy us a year. Not that we're going to take a year, but we, we're certainly not under the gun. I think pressure right now, we have more pressure to put an acting in place. We can take our time and based on what we experience from whoever becomes our next acting manager, we can decide together as a group, if we want to work with an outside entity such as the Collins Center or Community Paradigm, or if we're comfortable continuing on our own, with or without the help of those, those companies. So that's how I see it. That's how it's worked in the past. If anyone else has any suggestions or, or comments, then we can certainly discuss that right now. Connor?
Thanks, Mike. While it's not necessarily the most pressing thing compared to establishing an acting town manager, I don't want to see us wait too long into that process because that could certainly take some time. And just also thinking about our department heads and employees in town hall, we don't want them to go through a year of turmoil with different people that they're going to be managed by either.
Nope, I would agree. We're, we're, we're not going to drag our feet by any form or fashion, but I didn't want anybody to feel either that our, our backs are up against a wall. It's, the acting is, is more time sensitive. And like I said, we'd have a year and, and I, I wouldn't expect it to go out that far. I think that this will all fall into place and seek its own level and we'll, we'll know what the right thing to do is when the time comes. So summary action, under summary, our action items for our next meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Ralph?
No, before we go, and I saw Marilyn had her hand up and then I've got a comment also.
Okay. Well, Marilyn?
Thank you. Thanks, Ralph, for recognizing me. Anyway, we have, this, this search is going to be a little bit more challenging. I really feel that it is because our situation is different. And I think some of what Connor said is true, that we really need to keep our department heads in mind. I don't want them adjusting to a certain situation for a lengthy period of time and then suddenly we decide we want to do a, a professional search. I, I think that, or I believe in my heart that that professional search has to come sooner rather than later. It may take us a while in the process, but we need to find the right fit for East Long Meadow. We had it. We had it with Mary and now we have to find whoever that person is. I just don't want to wait a year and then embark on that, on that, on that challenge because we, we, we could see a whole, three new people on the council. We can see different leadership and I, I just don't want to put it off any longer than we have to. So I just want to plant that seed. I'm not talking about hiring a firm next week, but I think we need to talk about it sooner rather than later. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I agree with you and I, I certainly didn't want to give people the opinion that I wanted to wait a year. I just want to let you know that, you know, that's what the charter, the charter dictates. And obviously, we moved much faster than that the first two times. And I can assure you that I believe this will fall into place and we'll, we'll move at the speed that we're enabled to do. And I'm sure there will be continued discussions. They could be as an action item. This could be revisited after we sleep on it. If we come up with any ideas as soon as two weeks from tonight when we meet on the 9th. Ralph?
Mike, that, I was going to say almost exactly what Marilyn said. I would rather see, see us go head on and attack this sooner rather than later. And I mean, one of the first decisions we'll have to make as a council is whether we want outside representation to look for a town manager. And I think we need to do that sooner rather than later, because it takes a while. And, and even though you find someone, then it's going to take advertising and it, it takes months to go through the whole process. And I mean, I know of towns that literally got through the whole process and said, no, we don't like any of them. Let's start it over again. So not that I think that's going to happen, but I, I think we should really consider whether we want to do it on our own with a subcommittee or do a professional search, whether it be through the Collins or Paradigm or one of them. And like I said, I would love to see it on the agenda, at least as a discussion item for the next meeting, so that we've got a couple of weeks to start thinking about it and then go forwards with it.
That would be my suggestion as well. We, we, we're all hearing it this evening. Hopefully Kathy can join us and everyone else will be able to attend the meeting on the 9th. We sleep on it and I can, while Janie's right here, we can mark it as an agenda item to be continued at the November 9th meeting. Any other questions? All right. This time I want to make sure I don't see any hands up, so. We have no executive session this evening and there is no other business. We'll obviously be meeting in two weeks, as I stated on the 9th, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no discussion on adjournment, the clock is ticking. I don't see any discussion. Connor?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm showing adjourned at 6:37. Thank you all for your time and we'll see you shortly.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.